...to the United States of America and to the Republic of its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make motion, approve your agenda.
We got a motion above.
Second.
Second by man, all in favor. Seven out of eighty. Now, just got to make some agenda, some events in there, any bills you guys got questions of, pull them out now. Anything you can do to stay informed, keep that in mind. If there's no questions about any of that, just seek a motion for approval there.
Make a motion to approve your consent agenda as presented.
So we got a motion above. Second by me was Craig, all in favor. Seven out, moving on, we got presentations, Cardinal Foundation.
Cardinal Foundation is here, you've got a couple of links on your agenda. One of them has the updated draft of the multipurpose building that they have been working through diligently to give the board community feedback. I'd just like to say, you know, that's a lot of work that they've been doing, a lot of hours, and a lot of back and forths with Mammoth, who they're working with. And we've got a lot of good concept drawings as well, those are on your email. But I did link two of the main ones, main pieces there. One was the cost estimates, we worked through those Monday night, Monday night. And they asked a lot of good questions, we all asked a lot of good questions. And then also, the graphics have been updated, they look rather sharp again. And all of those, and Andy, please feel free to jump in. All of those are what they're proposing. And I hope you all take a look at that, because there was several links of interior and exterior views of what it looked like. I pulled the two documents, I thought you were going to see the most, but there were some on your emails as well, I hope you saw those. And that is what they're proposing to use in their campaign as they begin it, to the community as the vision for what they would like to see built when the bond passes. That's their vision for that facility. And obviously, there's a design phase that has to happen, an architect has to get involved. That's not the stage that we've completed. We completed the basic concept, this is the vision, what we'd like to see it look like. And then if the bond passes, we can start deciding, and that's what we'll do tonight in closed session, getting some legal advice on just how that project will proceed. And that's why the board has a learning session and closed session tonight, and speaking with our lawyers that specialize in construction projects, so that you guys have that piece of learning as well.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Jeez.
Are there any questions for the Cardinal Foundation? Andy, I believe you're representing them tonight. Any questions on what they were wanting to see? I think it's pretty clear, it's very clear if you look at the actual 3D renderings, those look really nice. Any concerns? I think what the Cardinal Foundation wants to know, Andy, if I'm saying this right, they want to know that you all are behind what you see here and their vision for what this building will look like. And that you're behind it, you're committed to trying to reach that goal. And you're good with those graphics and things going out at this point. And we'll do a round robin. Amanda, can you come?
I mean, I think it's important to say that this cost sheet that they gave us, some of those things have been, like we did ask questions about a lot of that stuff. And some of those things shouldn't really be on there anymore, so we don't have an updated one of those. Like that co-op cost, which was like eighty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And you know, the contingency, construction and design contingencies, those will obviously go down once it gets started, so, which are, you know, a hundred and six thousand and a hundred and ten thousand. So some of those things will reflect in the actual total, so.
Derek.
I mean, I think the design, I did not meet on the last meeting, but I believe the design has really changed a lot. I believe it's changed a lot, and it's going in the right direction, I think it looks great. I think the only question I had was fifty grand for four windows?
I remember their estimating high.
I know.
But I hope it's anything.
Did you go?
Yeah.
Well, and I knew I should, I wish I could have made that meeting to kind of look over.
And what they said is they made their estimates based on the subs that they are using. Those are estimates, so they're not going to estimate low, they're going to estimate high. Because these are today costs, not when you actually start building costs, which could be higher. So they're trying to see if that kind of a building is even within what we're bonding for and what we have donations for. So I was kind of saying like.
Any.
I'm sorry.
All right, one more, just real quick. Any word they're saying, I know, I see it, so everybody else can see it, what do they mean gym equipment? I know that was said.
The gym, the gym equipment they talked about, or we took it as was the basketball goals and some of the batting cage material, like the mechanisms to lower them, and like some volleyball standards. Blaze actually emailed, Dr. Rob got it real late, right before the meeting.
That's a mail, I forwarded it to you guys.
Said it was guesstimated very high on that. He admitted that one was a very high guesstimate. But that's what that includes, is the goals and volleyball standards and stuff like that. I think I'm good.
Okay.
All right.
I've just had a question, Derek just hit on it, about the eighty thousand first up. I didn't see on here scoreboards?
Oh, that was for, to get it, what you need to hang scoreboards, to get the electrical there and stuff like that. That's not for actual scoreboards.
It's just in case you want to add them later.
Correct.
Okay.
One of the things Coach Paul Peppert brought up, as he mentioned, that if and when, we had some donations that would update the ones that are in current major, who would take the old ones and put them over there so you could hang the old ones in the new space, if you wanted to do that, save even more money and not just throw things away.
But other than that, I do have another question, was bench seating, is that the portable features, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I think that, that was just some little small, you know, kind of like those three row ones that are out there that have a platform on the bottom so that they could sit off to the side and not damage anything, and they could be taken in and out.
That's another question tonight, I think overall, it's going to be your advice to me, it looks good. Something community should be, could be proud of.
Yeah, I think it'd be great, I mean, it looks like a great facility. I think that they've done a nice job of reconfiguring the interior of that, the spaces used, expanding the size out since that first version. I think that we would probably want to prioritize, somebody's thing you just mentioned, bench seating or whatever, as we go through this and get further along to say, okay, we've got these, obviously, some more of the optional type things that we would want to put in, to make sure that we hit the number that we need to hit there. I do think they are reassuring us that for the money, we would be able to build this building, which is good. So I do believe that, you know, if I'm going to bid this as a deal or as a job, then I know that I'm going to be in this hall of these categories so that I can get myself room to meet that, what I'm saying I'm going to do, so. I don't really have any questions that haven't been asked, so.
Dave? I'm good, yep.
Same as Bo, everything I was going to ask has been asked already tonight. I was at the meeting, not the last one, but for that, and I thought maybe to my parents then, and they listened, and I thought it was, I think it's all good.
Kelly?
Fire suppression, is that a code thing or insurance service?
The one, the building in Eldon did get local dispensation to not do that, so they do not have fire suppression. They said it's one of those things we're going to have to work through legally to figure out if we actually have to do it or not. So it's in there now.
That wasn't a suggestion?
Yeah, we questioned it also, because they're probably looking at facilities in cities that have code, you know, there may be some things.
We don't believe that there's code for Tipton for that, it would just be something we need to work through.
Yeah, we need to know for sure, and that's something we have to work through. Any other comments? Andy, anything else you guys needed to hear, required move forward, forward march.
Don't forget the, how we might do some signage on a name.
Okay.
I mean, you don't have to do that now or whatever, but we would like to know so we could get that in a picture, just in case.
Fisher Trust has, as you all aware, has made a donation of three hundred thousand dollars. At some point, we would want to consider the naming of that building, and you guys had some ideas about that. I feel like me personally, that's what kind of got the ball rolling, I think, kind of helped the Cardinal Foundation realize, hey, there's some people out there to support us, got some conversations going. Three hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money, it's getting interest right now. I can't remember what it's up to already, but the interest rates are nice, so the longer it sits there, the more we can. We kind of batted around something like the Fisher Multipurpose Building or Fisher Sports, kind of something like that training facility. You might be thinking about how, when, why, what's your thoughts on that, on the naming of that building? I think from talking to people, the Fishers have had a long community influence, but with the plant finally shut down, it's got a meatball right here in town because of that plant, it's good that they remembered us, I think it's a good thing. Think the Tipton Times included some of her comments from the letter she wrote for endorsing that, deciding that we could use it towards something that helps kids, so any thoughts on that, anybody want to share?
And if I don't have any thoughts, maybe reach out to.
Maybe ask them.
Reach out to them, they might have.
I think they should have a little bit of saying too.
Okay.
I think.
I'll send them the updated plans too, kind of keeping them apprised of it.
Of the ones you mentioned just now, I think those all sound fine. So I think if they, if they have a preference of the ones you just mentioned now, I think we just, we put that on our concept drawings so that it's out there, unless the board feels like we need to make a call on that. I personally don't, I'm fine with any of that.
I do want to ask a question going back, on the signage on the estimate, is that what we actually see in the picture? Or is it, surely isn't it?
No.
Okay.
We found that out Monday night also. I do believe it was included over the front door, was that correct?
Yeah.
But on the two ends, it did not. And we had kind of even mentioned on that north end, it's such a tight street anyways, you wouldn't necessarily need to spend the money to put signage up there, but it would look really nice on the south side to be able to see it from the highway that, you know, it's part of this school's complex.
Okay.
And I'll get back to you guys on that. Anything else, Andy, I'm listening.
I don't think so.
So next time your agenda, you got a robot to line the football field, assuming everyone watches the video.
Cardinal Hall, you want to?
Yes.
Do you want to say anything about this?
Yeah, like I said, I've been around this for thirty-seven years, and obviously, painting the football field is always brought up, whether the community is involved in doing it, whether the custodians and maintenance gets up doing it, whoever the case may be. So Coach Duke had come to me and wanted me to see this, and I had actually paid for it at Skyler the year I left, but I never actually got to see it in process, but Skyler was very, at the time, flush with money, they did not do turf. Of course, Andy and them had told me that when you look at the time involved, there's between four or five guys that basically paint the field every week, not as elaborate the weeks that there are football games, but there are a ton of man-hours in it. It's my understanding in the past, we pay the original person to paint the first time was between seven fifty and a thousand dollars and three hundred, three hundred dollars a week, and we don't pay anything now, so take that into account. So as a superintendent, I say if you can justify the cost, you know, I'll look at it and I'll promote it. So now that I've looked at it, the hard numbers are, we pay about four thousand dollars in paint. The robot, I say they guarantee it, I don't know if they're going to show up with extra paint, but they guarantee it'll save between sixty and sixty-five percent on your paint. Has everybody watched the video? Based on the speed of the robot is how much paint it uses, how wide the line. I will say this to be funny, Coach Duke will use the machine. So any extra paint would be on Coach Duke. But what I've come up with is, Coach Duke said that he would pay twenty-five hundred dollars out of this fundraiser, assuming we save the sixty percent off our paint, that's another fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars. That almost pays for the smaller package itself. I started a thing the first week to where we are, selling the tailgate slots at the football field, which is going to generate between seven, eight hundred dollars every game. I think it's safe to say that will be there, and I'm just, because it is football, I feel like I'm giving it back to the football program, they can have that money, so in all actuality, the smaller of the two does not cost the district a dime. So in that case, the way I look at it, that's a no-brainer. Coach Duke wants the larger machine, that would be up to you, you'd have to come up with some on your side. But as for just using the machine itself, I see no reason not to get it. For those that don't know how it works, it's set up through GPS, it can be based off the actual pins that are in the field. It's incredible, it will mark the field to within one thirty-second of an inch. The lines are straight, you fill it full of paint, you get out of the way, it runs. Mathematically, if we pay somebody, assuming that you stopped out of anger or a heart condition again when you went down, it is tough to find people do the field, we would pay between three and five thousand dollars a year to do the field. And that's on the low end, if you paid somebody fifteen dollars an hour and you had four guys doing it. So there's the, you have any questions, I can answer any question.
What did we pay Jason Lawson when he did it?
Last bill, what, somewhere around seven hundred fifty dollars.
Per.
Each time.
Each time, okay.
But it's not unusual, for many communities, paint their field, I don't want to throw a number out anymore because so many have gone to turf, but some do do that. And some of the largest schools that have not gone to turf, their maintenance staff does it. And that's always the biggest complaint from the staff, and it's also the easiest way to pass turf, because when you put the numbers together, it'll come up to, when you add fertilizer and water and all the things they add to the field, it's between sixteen and twenty thousand dollars a year to maintain a football field, but we're just talking about the paint. But without asking you for any money, he's going to be mad that I said this, but I'm, I can stand by this, to go with the smaller unit doesn't cost a school anything.
This is like a subscription, it sounds like, with this company. After the, like the contract would expire, you know how that would work?
They do three years at a time.
They do three at a time.
They have bought, they're blowing up, I mean, they're getting out there now, they have extra machines, they take them out, and of course, the moment they use them, they're sold. He came out for twenty-five minutes of the day, and those that have seen it done, or seen the people do a field, they did twenty-five yards in about twenty minutes, that's including the hashes and the numbers. It was spectacular, doing it on the practice field. But it's a, it's a three-year, and I know it's a machine.
Is this package just the big package or the small package?
This would be the smaller package.
Eleven thousand is?
No, six, that's why it pays for itself.
We didn't see that one.
Yeah, we only have the bigger version, so.
Well, and once again, he's going to be upset with me, but I can justify that. And what I'd like to see is, if we do it three years, then we look at it three years down the road, and if you can justify it, can you go with the larger one?
We don't know, we wouldn't own it though, right?
No, oh no. The outright cost of the expensive machine was like fifty-eight something thousand dollars. They are, they're amazing. They've even got so far as where you don't pour the paint in the machine, there's a jug inside the machine, to save the, you pour it inside the jug, you take the jug out, it's pretty foolproof now. And the reason it's on three, they replaced the machines, but they haven't had to yet, because obviously, they're all fairly new, they've been out for about five years.
The way, I, sorry, the way I understood it, because I talked to Coach Duke about this last night, because I was reading through the questions, and he said the eleven, the other one, the one that we saw, would be able to do, the difference being it would be able to do the baseball softball fields, mark off the soccer field for band, practice fields, where if we do the one that you're talking about, it's just going to do the football field.
It'll do the football field and the practice field.
So this one would do baseball softball, all that stuff?
The larger one would, yes.
So what happens when we're getting ready for the game and it won't work?
They replace with another one. If you're painting.
How quick, I mean.
They'd be there that day.
Where are they located, Adam?
St. Louis, right?
Yeah.
They have stations throughout the.
This kid came from the Brookfield area, so he's not too far away.
Most of the time you paint your field on a Wednesday night, and something I left out, not to overkill it, was, you know, the average cost if we paid to have it done can be, on the low end, three thousand dollars, which is still a lot of money, but it could be as high as four or five, depending on how wet the year is. You know, and if the grass grows better, I mean, this is all stuff you don't really take into account until you do it. When the grass is growing, you've got to mow more, you have to paint more, when it rains, you have to paint more. It's a never-ending process, and, you know, those guys need to be appreciated to do it, because they're out there four or five hours a night, every week.
So is football willing to put in that much money every year? So are we going to, if we wouldn't go with this bigger package, is baseball and softball willing to put money in to get their fields marked?
Well, you talk to a baseball coach, honestly, I don't need that. And I don't think they, that's a big push, I don't need to talk to them about it, because they chalk the lines, you know, it takes twenty minutes to chalk lines, Duke batter's box.
Sure.
Is it perfect? No. But it's hard for me to justify spending that kind of money on a baseball field.
Any other questions?
Perfect. I think the lower, oh, you asked for that.
Was that?
The lower, the lower cost machine seems like it's a no-brainer, especially considering.
I forgot to throw in, the eleven thousand package, they give you two thousand dollars worth of paint, which obviously you can water it down, make it as far as possible. And the smaller machine comes with a thousand dollars worth of paint, and that's where it definitely pays for itself. Now, we will use it, Coach Duke will use that the first month, because he'll have that field looking like the Notre Dame when it starts out.
So regardless of all package we pick, football's still willing to put in twenty-five hundred?
Yes. And I'm willing to put the, whatever comes off that hill, we'll put in there.
Okay.
Between that, the savings of the paint, we should be on a positive side. And then we can look at it, and I'm sure they would let us change our contract anytime, because it's more money for them. But I would look, I want to see where it is after a year and what the usage is.
Next up, transportation review.
Gerald, I see you, so Julie, you was here to go over your bus routes, answer your question.
So I know Dr. Rob, but a few maps in your, on your email or on your tablets, just going over the bus routes that we've established for this year. We're doing four AM routes and five PM routes, got those started here a couple of weeks ago. Haven't really changed a lot from the previous contractor that come in here and did it, it worked. We're having good staffing levels. We've got another full-time hire coming in, probably by the end of next week, so we can run five AM and five PM routes, if we so choose, so if we can work that with Dr. Rob, it's what you all want to do. Bus routes are going good, safety's going good, we've had a couple of questions, I've talked with Ashley about some safety questions. I really don't have a whole lot, unless you all have questions about the routes or bus stops or anything else.
And the app, you can start sending that out?
The app, you can start sending that out. Should start getting questions, there's an email link on the Bus Zone app, they'll email it back to me, and I have, just to let you know, this is my first school, Tipton Smith, and it has the Bus Zone app, there are glitches in it. I always tell people, the people that trained me on it, if you have questions, ask your fifteen-year-old kid, they'll solve it for you in about five minutes, because you have to download an app, set some geo fences, make sure you're choosing the right thing, it's pretty simple. From the people instructed me, I have corporate help that can help me answer questions. On that Bus Zone app, it's just basically you send an email and we'll get back to you. It takes, it takes a little time to get it set up, I got all the data from the school with the kids and the, everything looked good for the school district, so we'll get it up and running. And basically, what it does is, you pick your kids' zones, you can set multiple zones, so like you can set up, say a, there's a max, like a thousand-foot perimeter around your house, and when that bus enters that zone, it sends you a text alert that your kid is within that zone. It doesn't exactly, what I call, you can't track that bus, it sets breadcrumbs. That way, obviously, we don't want people, and we don't want following our buses around, following your kids around, but it'll set a breadcrumb every so many seconds of where they're going, like breadcrumbs on a map. We've, I told Dr. Rob, we've got the district home bus in, he can fill you in on that, had a mechanic go over it. But do you all have any questions for me?
I don't have any.
And it's on the, to approve tonight, those routes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gerald.
You're welcome.
Huddle services, Steve's up.
You guys sent me a question, I know there might have been some confusion, I was, this was a email, this is something you guys have had for, go on the better part of a decade. It used to be a want, I look at it as a need now, the school districts I've been at have had it. Four hundred and thirty-six schools have huddle now. I know sometimes there's a question on the cost, I have them break it down, well, what would it cost if you just try to do what they call à la carte? It is expensive, but obviously, with the Booster Club paying half, that's a pretty good deal. Coaches understand if they add to it, they have to pay the difference. I know as a, as a coach myself, one of the reasons, the premise that Huddle put themselves on was fifteen or sixteen years ago to save school districts and, and coaches' money and time, they came up with this idea, because, you know, my last couple of years, like my mileage checks were between fifteen hundred and two thousand dollars, because that's back in the day when I had to drive to exchange a tape, and I don't know if you've seen how this works for the coaches, it's pretty spectacular, where the kids can get online, watch the set, watch the films, they can break down plays, tape, the stats programs are mind-boggling. I've always done my own, but what they can do with a touch of a button is pretty incredible. Then, of course, COVID added to them, kind of blew them up when they took it to the live stream part, and now people are pretty spoiled, they want to be able to watch live stream if they're not there, but. A lot of positives, everything, but obviously, the cost, but, you know, as a superintendent, we always talk about what we want to do for our staffs, both teaching and coaching, to provide them with a resource to make them successful. Well, I can assure you, it's being used. Coach Duke and his players, I notice them the most, because I can follow who's on there, and of course, the basketball programs, but just for what they use for volleyball, et cetera, it's invaluable.
Anybody got anything on that?
So I guess Coach, or Cardinal Hall, what I was going to wonder is, my daughter's in volleyball, and I was trying to get on the last two nights to watch the games, and they were not there. Is that something that?
Home games?
They were away games. One was Centralia, and I know Centralia's got a camera.
I don't know why they would, that makes no sense whatsoever.
I didn't know if that was Centralia's deal, or if that had been on us, because I've kind of talked to somebody else about huddle, and you know, I guess to get our prime use out of it, we need to, I want to make sure all of our, you know, our coaches are making sure their schedules are going on there, so that, you know, we're getting our.
And Centralia is state of the art, they're very wealthy, they do well, I have no idea. And last night, we went to Fayette, who has all the bells and whistles, and they didn't know. Now, last night we went to Fayette, who has all the bells and whistles, and they didn't know, they didn't know how to get it started, so I think ours was about two or three minutes in the game, but it's out there now. The nice thing for the, for the patron is you guys can go online and on Misha, and they actually have a page, you click on the TV and it'll take you to the game. It's old-school coaches, I use Coach Duke, for example, and myself, I don't like all my films out there. But you can go on there now and, and pretty much find anybody you want. And I hate to sound like the kids, everybody's doing it, everybody is doing it. The schools that do not have it, I wage a hundred bucks on every district, they're not very successful. Or they're sure not, their coaches are very successful. But, uh, of course, a very, very small, small district.
On some of the smaller, or, I say smaller programs, I don't mean to take away from any program, but I know football uses it like crazy. Are, are a lot of them using it, you know, I mean, they're actually, it's.
And if you guys ever want to come in, I can take you through, I only had huddle one year, I got in the second year of E Bill. It was spectacular, I mean, until you, until you have it. But, uh, you can monitor, like my girls or coaches' players, it'll come up, it'll say, okay, huddle, you were on there watching three hours, thirty-two minutes. So I can tell that you were watching game film, you know, you can list your, your plays, your sets, whatever you want, things to work on, they can click, click the button. Dr. Robinson calls me from Centrellia, hey, I need a film, okay, I, I need something, click the button, you exchange it. Before we drove and met, um, you can't send anything through an email, because it's too big. That's how, uh, Lefty and I met, was because I couldn't send him a film, because I didn't have huddle. He ended up finding a way to get it to me, and then we ended up having the next year, and we were able to exchange films, but it's being used. Uh, I got the question about baseball and softball, they don't, you can put one up on the backstop, it's another, another cost, but they haven't asked for it. A lot of them use GoPro and something else. But the volleyball, the wrestling, the basketball, the football, but it is definitely getting us used, absolutely.
Is that integrated and directed in YouTube, is that how we?
It was.
It used to, now it goes to Misha TV.
They took it away now.
It's still free, but it's just streamed through a different service, they, if you want to use YouTube now, they charge you to use YouTube, because they want you sitting it through Misha TV, but it's still free through Misha TV.
But that wasn't good. Okay, that makes sense, but I was wondering, you said it would still be free, because I was trying to look into.
If you just go to Misha TV, type in Tipton, it'll pop up all of Tipton's games through Misha TV.
I guess it's somewhat optional, not that I support like us charging for that, but I guess some schools have a feed and watch a game.
You can, we talked about this today, but this is where I, I don't like it, because this is where they're making money. You know, there's a way, we can sell digital tickets, sounds great, I, I don't like, I'd rather do it face-to-face, hand-to-hand, because if we charge a five-dollar ticket, we have to charge six-thirty to get five dollars, they make a buck thirty, what'd they do? You know, this is something I'd like to start in my next retirement, is, as a program to match this. Uh, they do the live stream, some people sell a package and they might say, hey, fifty bucks to get it all year long, you can get a reagent you want, it's a good deal, but our response today is if we offer that, people stop coming to the games. It's much, much easier to sit down on the couch and watch the game, I want people in the gym, and that's why I immediately stopped it when the pandemic quit, because I, I didn't like that. But it is a great deal, like, my mother lives in, in Texas, and she's going to watch, watch all the events, she'll be able to. It doesn't make me happy, because now my film's out there, but he makes fun of me today, that's just, that's old-school mentality, people want your films. You know, each one of us last year probably had ten to fifteen films, and everybody needed to have film on.
But your other programs like baseball, softball, even though they don't have a camera, you can still have access to stats and all that stuff, correct?
Yeah, and most of the baseball and softball use Gamechanger, it's just a different app, because then if you're a parent of them, you can see it from your phone and it's live. Similar, but it's just a different service.
Third, reports. Positives from Dr. Rob, here we go. Somebody challenged me to say, hey, we need to talk about more positives, so that's what I'm gonna do. Did anybody see a big win here at home with a few thousand people? Our neighbor, California, I don't think it's, uh, too late to still talk about it a little bit. Probably the most, uh, well-attended game in Tipton that I've seen since I've been here. And I'd like to give credit to our building administrators, our gate workers, our coaches, all of our faculty that were, uh, taking gate and helping with kids, getting information out there, a lot of hustling at the concession stand, if you didn't notice. In particular, Mr. Twinner grilling, I walked over by his grill a few times and I said, oh my, this is a real hot box over here, I, I just couldn't do it. That was one hot job. Uh, facilities-wise, I mean, we could all say we were a little under-equipped to handle that large crowd, but we handled it. And, um, it, it was a great home opener, I think it was a success. Um, but, uh, it's because many local, hard-working people, we even had local law enforcement, uh, we, we did pay a couple of officers to be there, just keep everything calm. Didn't have need of them, uh, but another, a lot of other officers showed up as well, and just wanted to watch the game and be a part of it. Um, Coach Duke and the team even got up the next morning and did some cleanup for us around the, around the track, so I thought it was a really good thing, they had a lot of pride in, and, and putting that game on for us, and everybody got involved, and also I'd like to thank Mr. Carver Hall again, you mentioned it earlier about, uh, the tailgate idea. We rode around in his golf cart, just kind of brainstorming, and that's what he came up with, so that seems to be pretty popular. Start of the school year, we had, uh, Dr. CJ Huff here, and he shared his experience and about perseverance, uh, that his community had to go through in school district after the catastrophe at Joplin. I think that was very well-received from a, a lot of the faculty and staff that spoke to me about it. Um, he will return here on October twenty-eighth, he'll be here from ten to noon, and we'll be sending out some invitations to businesses, faith-based organizations, and community organizations. And I spoke at Montauk County Regional Economic Development Meeting today, um, to get, um, the word out that we're going to start to launch Bright Futures as a framework, um, and some support from a potential multi-county grant with the Walton Foundation that we'll be applying for. So, we're looking to identify local community leaders and send, uh, one administrator and one local leader that we are targeting. Um, we are working on that, aren't we, Ashley? Um, about to have a paid trip to Little Rock, Arkansas, to be trained in Bright Futures implementation. And that date is forthcoming, either November or December, and it's funded by Bright Futures USA, CJ, Dr. Huff invited us to be a part of that. Uh, transitioned to seminary data, did a little bit of, uh, qualitative data gathering, and talking to students on what they think about that, talked to a few parents as well, probably had about ten, twelve people I'd talked to. Um, it's funny what kids will say, and, uh, it's been very positive. Uh, a lot of kids saying the day goes by a lot faster, uh, we're getting a lot more done, uh, even though the classes are shorter, and they feel like, uh, not being in the same class so long, um, is better, and that's the general feeling, I haven't heard any kids say, I wish we were back on block yet, but maybe they're out there. Uh, one class, just for calculating that up, meeting fifty minutes per day, over the sixteen days of school we've had so far, is eight hundred minutes of instruction. The old block will meet half as many days for seventy minutes, that's five hundred and sixty minutes. So already, we've had four more hours of instructional time, a day sixteen of school, in every class on a student's schedule. Uh, flex program, we have nineteen seniors, according to, uh, Ms. Garber, working in and around our community for part of the school day, and preparing to enter the workforce, the character of this particular graduating class is they want to get out and make money and get to work, and that's good. And that means they don't want to sit at home and lounge on the couch and play video games all the time. So, we're continuing to develop our plan, we feel like we have a good seed with the flex program, which we kicked back up a few years back, as part of the pandemic, we started on that. Right now, we have two, the next step up from flex is to have, uh, pre-apprenticeship or apprenticeship programs. The first, um, two slots we have are at Martin Energy, been very appreciative of their willingness to work with us and flesh out what that would look like. And we're looking for the right student, we're actively looking for that student, we have a few identified, haven't had any, we've had nibbles on the hu- on the hook, we haven't had any bites yet. It's a unique opportunity, I've written to a few parents about what it entails, and trying to get the parents involved and encouraging their young people, I think a little, a few of them might be scared right now. It's kind of new, it's got a little more responsibility, a little more tied to it. Um, I met with Montauk MRed, Montauk Regional Economic Development Committee today, and shared this information along with the Bright Futures information. Um, we continue to make good use, and this is a positive of central office, I know it gets pointed at a lot, so I just wanted to say this. It's a district resource, and it serves as a training center, as well as a central business office. Uh, Durham Transportation is using the office next door in some of our parking lots in Summit Hill. That agreement has saved us over, uh, approximately a hundred thousand dollars over the next five years, because we're able to let them use this property, the office, as well as the parking. I've been pleased with their response to our district needs, I'm glad we have them on board, uh, been very professional, very responsive when we had some concerns. Um, school began, since school began, uh, Durham has held their training here, this is just since school began, it was their safety training, and Amy said she learned a lot too, right, Amy?
Yep.
Yep, she did, she said, she said, Dr. Rob, they take training very, very seriously, and she told me more than once. Um, so she gets to sit out here and hear some of that training sometime. Uh, we also had the beginning teacher assistants training, that was a few days, I believe, and Ashley, didn't you have some reading training letters?
Uh, we have three of those this year that are, we're going to be at the hub, RPDC continues to reach out for us.
So RPDC is actually the Regional Professional Development, is able to kind of target here, we're kind of dead center, so it's a good place for them to come in and use this space as well, so not just the boardroom. Um, let's see, uh, we're also going to have a training here tomorrow with the Missouri Association of School Administrators, they're going to come in for, uh, school communication plans, and we'll have about five school districts here. Don't forget, administrators, eight-thirty, we have a meeting over here till about noon. And, um, they're going to, Dave Luther out of Massa is going to be in here and help us, uh, with some planning, and we're kind of going to pick a topic, and we're going to work on that topic, and actually have a working plan before the end of the meeting, according to his training schedule. Carrie Updegrove, I'd like to give her a big shout-out, uh, she's our data coordinator, and she has been working since, so, about the end of the school year of our transition of our school information system to Teacher Ease. I couldn't have done it without her, um, and I, I take very little part of it, other than helping her vet it. Um, she's instrumental in, in directing our efforts in troubleshooting, we basically went from a, uh, online, this Cis-K twelve, changing completely over because they went out of business, to a brand-new computer system to take roll, grades, everything else, and Carrie has been all over it. It even has some new functions that I think parents have asked for, for quite a while, and one of them is to be able to pay for lunch and breakfast and pay fees online. Uh, so I think she's been testing that out with a few people, and we're getting ready to launch that as well. So, she deserves a lot of credit for, um, helping our teachers and helping our, our administrators and everybody just with that transition. I'd also like to give a big shout-out, because the custodians continued to work during the first day of school, where we headed back to school, um, for all the teachers, when Dr. Huff was here, I wanted to tell about the custodians giving us the cleanest building since the pandemic, and even Steve Carver Hall's nodding his head, it's cleaner than any building, he was superintendent, we know that already, but I'm just teasing you, Steve. But anyway, um, the, uh, the, uh, custodians really worked hard, and I also want to mention all the students that we hired this summer, we're working alongside them as well. And I think the addition of Mint has also helped with some of that deep cleaning, and I think it all came together, and all the custodial crew and, uh, Bob Lorrie do deserve a lot of credit for really being on top of it. I also thank Three and T was a, a very good addition as well, they got a lot of painting done almost through the entire building. Uh, if you look around, uh, the walls are white, they're clean, um, and I think they did a lot of great work for us. Um, Ms. Kohler did, uh, contact me, uh, again, and ask if she could be on the schedule for next year, and if, as long as you guys don't have anything against that, I think it was a really positive thing for our community. Uh, bringing that group in, they went out and did projects throughout the community, and they also helped us with our maintenance needs in our building, and I think it's a positive relationship, and I told her that I'd tell you guys that tonight, that I'm planning on them having coming, them come in in, uh, twenty-twenty-five, uh, barring any major thing that happens, um, construction-wise, which I don't see anything on the horizon, so I think it's okay to go ahead and put them at the end of summer school for that week again, and let them put that on their website and start recruiting people. Um, any concerns with that? Good, and I'm just going to roll forward with it. Um, we also made the cover of the first edition of. A ball flyer there, Charlie Bailey may have seen this round, there's a few extras I had out there, if you'd like to have a copy, we already framed one on the wall, because it has to get framed on the wall of fame up there. Nice article about the Lady Cardinals, Anne Charlie really speaks well of our community. I talked to Rod Smith, his daughter is involved in, uh, this magazine, and another one will be coming in, out in October, and it is tentatively titled, wait for it, We Build a Future. It's going to be all about Tipton activities, our school district, so it's supposed to be a feature story, you heard that, Jason, Gary talked to you about that too.
Already got five articles, or five tables, been articles.
Yeah, it's going to have featured students in it, so I think he told me you were picking them out, so it, it's going to be pretty cool, guys, we're going to be featured right there. A lot of good things going on, a lot of districts are looking at us from the outside and saying, wow, Tipton's got some good things going on, so there's a whole lot of positives, so, how's that? We need to hear that stuff. That's all I got to say about that.
All the other reports are there, if you all have any questions for any of those administrators. Now's the time. Any questions? Administrators have any comments that you would like to have? Moon owned all the business. Approval of the K Concrete Bill.
I spoke with K Concrete a few times, and that is a more detailed bill that you all requested, I'm recommending that we approve those, so we can pay them, getting close to a thirty-day, uh, from the time that they completed the work.
So I guess I read correctly, they're, who's working on the ramp?
I, I, I sent you that earlier this week, um, that I did speak with Aaron Moon, and he has offered to come back and complete that. They did offer to do that, is my understanding, initially, as they were working, they did not get to it. So, I did call Aaron, since he did the original work, and he offered to do it this week.
But it never reflected the eighteen thousand on that?
No, they never gave you a price for repairing the ramp.
I, I don't know, we never saw a regular, or, original estimate.
No, I didn't either.
Yeah, so.
Just like a step up to.
All right, I'll move to approve, unless we have any questions, I didn't even talk to them on this, so I think you guys wanted to know more detail. So, I'll move to approve both Bill One and Bill Two.
So we got a motion of both. Second by Ashley, all in favor? Seven out of eight, moving on, huddle.
Derek asked to add, uh, all the funding discussion, we kind of discussed it already, anything else, Derek, on that?
Well, I know we had a discussion last meeting that we didn't nail down, I know we went with huddle, but there was also discussion on how we were going to do it, and I wanted to see if that was resolved, or what we were going to do. It says, because I know me and Craig, or Craig had concerns, and we both looked at it different, I just wanted to see if that was how we were going to approach, because there's patrons wondering, you know, if it's going to be per sport, or if we're going to just pay it to be done, or how that's going to work.
I, we haven't made any change to how we funded it, based on what you guys have told us so far.
And what we discussed the last time.
You did, but there's been no motion and nothing told us.
So right now, the school.
It's fifty percent the district and fifty percent the district.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Everybody go to that?
Yeah.
Perfect, moving on to new business.
We don't have to approve that, right?
Carrie did.
All right, did, yeah. So we got approval of bus routes. Um, you guys got the maps, which is up here, nobody had any questions?
I'll have to motion to approve the bus routes and maps presented.
So we have a motion by Ashley. Second by Bo.
Okay, question, since we're running four routes in a morning, is that we're going to start reflecting our.
Less money?
Less money?
Yes.
And that will start, I guess, this month, or is it just?
Every time, every time they don't use the fifth route, we don't be paying for that fifth route.
I didn't know if it was like, we get paid, they get paid for five routes no matter what, or if they're just kind of doing it as a day-to-day basis.
Okay, are you serving a motion by Ashley, a second about Bo, all in favor? Seven out of eight. So moving on to this, to this row block for the football field, excuse me. Questions, concerns? You all had to be attacked.
Mr. Carver, are you recommending that we buy the smaller one, which is like?
Oh, yes.
Six grand. You're leasing it.
I think that makes sense because, I mean, he's right. If we were to get a year underneath us and like it, to feel, I felt, thought like we could use it in other capacities and I'm sure they're like, upgrade if they wanted to.
They do it on, on a three-year deal, but it's, the nice thing is the warranty comes along. What happens when it breaks down, we have to replace it, fix it, whatever. There's not a lot for us to mess up, which is nice. We'll see.
So you still have somebody out there running it, correct?
Well, they still have to fill it. When it runs out, stops, you can come back and fill it again. That is the disadvantage, but that's still one ever, but you'll have to fill it up twice to do the field.
So they'll still use the stencils and all that, but?
This, that's, I could let that out. The smaller one will not do the cardinal. But we already have the stencils, do the cardinal.
Some of the guys that are doing it now will still be thinking you should do that.
But they'll do the numbers and the hashes and the lines and everything.
Well, that, excuse me. What I understood from the video, it is going to take some setup each time. I mean, not saying that that's going to be all that tough, but they have to find their pins and set it up and.
Like right now, since it's marked, if they deliver it Friday, put on the field, it's done. They'll just go. Because they can read the lines and everything is already there. It's pretty amazing.
Kind of maintenance you got to do, like cleaning the paint nozzles and, I mean, is there a little bit of that that they got, that you, we got to do? Yeah, he'll have to, whoever's in charge. Run like thinner or something through it to make sure it's cleaned and ready for the next one or?
All the paint is in the jug.
It's all water-based?
Yeah. Yeah. Water-based is the jug and it has a spray tip.
So it's pretty easy to maintain it?
Not like running the actual, like, I, I pay for it or whatever, not clean all the tubes and cords. So we have a motion for the smaller machine.
I'll make the motion, all right?
Second?
I'll second.
So we got a motion by Bo. Second by Ashley. All in favor of getting the small robot to paint the field?
We're all on Steve's recommendation, right?
Got a smaller one?
There's a big idea. Other questions before we take it to vote? All right, all in favor?
Congratulations. You just entered the twenty-first century and hired a robot to work for the school. We've entered the jet-senation.
All right, I'll make a motion, move to executive session pursuant to six-one-zero-point-zero-two-one. Discuss number one. Include the board of education.
So we got a motion by Bo. Second by David.
Oh, yes.
Yes, Ashley.